All cell phones, please. Silent. I'd like to call the November 12th, 2019 special city council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember Paul?
Here.
Councilmember LaCuro?
Here.
Councilmember McFaul?
Here.
Invocation, Pledge of Legions, please stand. Please bow.
Sorry there. Let's bow our heads, please. Holy Spirit, source of all life, we gather together as the elected officials of our community, charged by the people to discern our future together. We are a diverse body brought together by the same Spirit. We pray that we will be faithful to the work at hand to set aside our own personal agendas to seek out the greater good. Open our minds and our hearts to listen in for your will for us and bestow upon us your wisdom and grace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have the Honorable Judge Gettard, please come to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, we're lucky tonight to be joined by Judge Chuck Gettard of the Hazel Park Division of the 43rd District Court. Welcome Judge, you are here for a very solemn and important purpose tonight. The swearing in of two newly elected council members, Councilman Andy LaCuro and Councilman Mike McFaul. Andy, would you please go over to the dais and be sworn in, please.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member in and for the City of Hazel Park, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations. No, you're not done, I need to witness your signature right there. You sign right there and I'll keep my eyes on you the whole time. Alright, congratulations again, you're welcome.
Mr. McFaul?
Mike McFaul? I'll go the leisure route. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member in and for the City of Hazel Park, County of Oakland, and State of Michigan, to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations. Done yet? Sign right there. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome Councilman McFaul. Thank you Judge Gettard. Appreciate it.
Thank you Judge.
Thank you.
And I think congratulations to the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to the election of Mayor Pro Tem for a one-year term.
Mr. Mayor, I had a little discussion to have about that. So, in the past, the council was all elected all at once and the mayor was all elected, everybody was two years, and we recently went to staggered terms. And I'm of the belief that we, I would like to set a precedent for the future where if a person is elected and gets the most votes, they would normally, some number-wise, be the Mayor Pro Tem, but if they were in their first year, I would like them, I'd like us to start a precedent where they're not the Mayor Pro Tem in the first year, but in the second year. And also start a precedent where the Mayor Pro Tem is serving for only one year. To that design, I would, in that design, I would be serving as Mayor Pro Tem next year. And I would nominate Alyssa Sullivan to be Mayor Pro Tem this year. That needs a second.
Second.
Any dissension?
I don't know if that needs any more explanation for anybody, but...
There are none?
And I don't know if you want to move, change seats.
However you want to do it. Approval of the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
Dissension, discussion? I would like to add the reasoning that Mayor Pro Tem Aubrey brought up the purple ribbons here.
So, November 21st is pancreatic cancer awareness day. Since we will not be here November 21st, we are all wearing purple today to honor somebody very close to this council who does have pancreatic cancer.
I would like to put it on the agenda, that's why I was asking for it, on the approval of the agenda to add November 21st as pancreatic cancer awareness day.
And Mr. Mayor, you can proclaim that as such right now by simply slamming your gavel in doing so, and we will note that in the minutes that you have done so.
I was going to do that, but I want to give the Mayor Pro Tem her kudos for bringing the ribbons forward. Well, apparently, at this meeting. I proclaim the 21st of November pancreatic cancer awareness month. Week, day, actually. Thank you. It's been a long cold day out there.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it is an insidious disease. There's not enough research, you're seeing unfortunately more and more people who are being diagnosed with this hideous malady every single day, and it's high time that as a society and as a culture that we do more research into this terrible disease and cancer as a whole. If we can do the amazing things that we're doing, I think that we, in so many other areas of science, I think that we need a concerted effort to finally put together some kind of a program, government-sponsored, and involving the private sector and our research universities and every country on this planet to have a worldwide goal of curing cancer within the next year. I mean, coming up with some kind of treatments that can do that. So, I'm glad that you're bringing awareness to this. We need, as human beings, to make curing cancer one of our most important goals. Thank you, my statement.
Can I add something, please?
Sure.
I've been doing a lot of research lately and I've learned that only 2% of all of the federal funding goes towards pancreatic cancer research, only 2%. And by January 2020, pancreatic cancer is going to be the second leading cause of all cancer deaths. And it is a death sentence. I learned that it's not if, it's when am I going to die? There are only two treatments for pancreatic cancer, they are both chemotherapy-based, and if they do not work, there are no options. No stem cells, no nothing. So, people go home to die. Trying to find a clinical trial is near impossible, and most oncologists are not aware of clinical trials for pancreatic cancer. So, I'm very grateful to the city council, Mr. Mayor, city manager, and all of you here for the support and to help spread the word of this horrible death sentence, and to ask for the support of wearing purple on November 21st. If you go to PanCan on the internet, that is a network that has a link on there where you can actually click the link and you can fill out just a few boxes, and it will automatically by your zip code, send a letter to your state reps, et cetera, asking them to, on November 21st, to wear purple and to try to bring some attention to this. So, thank you again very, very much.
Thank you. We'll open it up to civic announcements, anyone have any civic announcements from the public that wouldn't come up? I see our county commissioner, Helene Zax, here. Welcome.
First of all, I want to congratulate everybody on their successful election, and congratulations for those that ran. It's a very bold move to put your name and run an election, so thank you for participating. Want to remind you that we do have a wonderful Oakland County Health Department that is working closely with your community, hopefully on lead issues and educating, and for those of you that haven't gotten your flu shot, they are available at the Health Department. The closest location is on Greenfield Road in Catalpa in Southfield, and Catalpa is eleven and a half mile, and so you can go get flu shots there. They're also doing an educational program on vaping, and you can find lots of good resources at www.oakgov.com. Also, we have found a couple of cases of animal rabies in Oakland County, and yeah, believe it or not, and there's more information about that in the, on the website, too. We have been, I've been working very hard, we've done a lot of positive change. We now are going to have a new bond council as we go for project. I served on a request for a proposal, a committee looking at that. We also reviewed our audit company, went through a bidding process on that, and did decide to stay with Plant and Moran right now, but it takes time, it's a healthy process to review different operational things. I do want to remind people that there are wonderful services from our Oakland County Economic Development Department for small business development, and one of the initiatives of our new county exec, Dave Coulter, is not only to seek jobs overseas, but really to grow business locally. And we added more money from, into the budget for microloans, and this is startup funding for businesses, and there's a whole continuum of services. And the best way to find that is the oakgov, www.oakgov.com/advantageoakland, and it will lead you to the different business services that are out there for you. Finally, we did renew funding for Haven. One of the things that we do is we buy services, they have a very unique certified nursing examination after some type of assault or strangling, and it helps our Oakland County prosecution. And so, we do purchase services toward that type of exam, and we renewed the contract, and I'm very glad that we're doing that. Finally, there are five appointments open to the Oakland County Community Mental Health Board. Two for secondary consumers, two members for general public, and one individual working in the mental health field. And we encourage you to apply. Place to find the applications is under the oakgov/Board of Commissioners website, BOC, or if you have any questions, you can ask me and our city councilwoman, Amy Aubrey, can also help you. But I'd really love to have people, you know, we're trying to renew some of these boards, I'd love to have one of my constituents get appointed to the mental health board, so please apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Helene. Any other civic announcements from the audience?
Congratulations, councilmembers Aubrey, excuse me, LaCuro and McFaul, and congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan. Beth Holland, 305 West Milton. If you all noticed this lovely ensemble I'm wearing tonight, I am not confused about the month. I'm advertising this Saturday, we have the Craft and Vendor Show happening at Hazel Park High School, which is at Hazel Park High School, and that will be from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. If you have not started your Christmas shopping, you need ideas, or you just want to go see what local crafters and actually some artisans have to offer, we encourage you to come by. There is something for everybody, for all ages, for all interests, it is a really cool event, and we're very fortunate to have a lot of local talent there. So, look forward to seeing everyone there.
Is there anything we could put on the cable channel?
Do you have a flyer for that, Beth?
I can send you a link to it.
Send me a link.
Thank you.
On cable, thanks.
Anyone else? Close the civic announcements to the public. We also have the three-lane ceremony, November 26, 6:00 p.m. at the ICE Arena. Make sure you can make it, bring a coat or two, it might be colder than we expect it, usually it's kind of chilly, but it's a little colder than normal, so...
We will have hot chocolate, popcorn.
Free skate for the kids. I have Santa Claus there, we'll have a little... And cookies, okay. And cookies. Alright, any civic, any other civic announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Hazel Park Recreation Department, Lunch with Santa, that's December 14th, 2019, from 12:30 to 2:00 p.m. The cost of that is $5 per person, and there are gifts that are also handed out to the participants.
Anybody else? Close civic announcements, we'll open up public discussion. Jake Sleivatz, let's put a slip in.
Hi, good evening, everyone, Jake Sleivatz, 1620 East Hayes. First of all, congratulations, Councilmen, congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem. And I want to say, it's really great now that you guys are posting the agendas and the supporting materials on the site, too, because that's really nice to have that information there. So, I just have a couple of suggestions here regarding Title VIII, Chapter 2, as you guys are going to be going over here. Basically, one of the things I noticed in the definition of deteriorating areas is that it allows for any number of properties to be picked up, or picked out as an area, there's no real definition of area and how many properties constitute that. I was wondering if council would consider perhaps changing the language to say that an area has to be eight or more properties so that at least two of those properties would have to count as deteriorated in order for that to be considered a deteriorating area? And then the other suggestion I had while we're on the topic of Title VIII, I'm a proponent of clearboarding, and basically what that is, it's a, it's a replacement for plywood that's often used on vacant homes. Ohio is one good case study that can actually be taken up on this, they've actually banned the use of plywood on foreclosed homes. Fannie Mae has also, pardon me, banned the use of plywood on their homes in pre-foreclosure in favor of clearboarding. And what that is, is it's a polycarbonate board, basically, that goes over the doors, goes over the windows, as the name suggests, it's clear, it's installed the same way as plywood is, where you have the board, you have a brace inside, but some of the, some of the benefits of it are that because it's clear, the house still maintains, or the property still maintains, the appearance of open, you know, visible doors and windows versus those being obstructed, and it's more secure, not only in that the board itself is stronger than plywood, but it's also braced on the inside versus city code currently requires, or the Title VIII currently requires that the plywood be fastened with either two, two-inch Phillips head screws, which can easily be removed by a drill, or with nails on the second story, which obviously can be pried out. So, there are a couple benefits to it. Cost, I know is obviously going to be a discussion, if this discussion is going to be taken up, it would probably cost the city more money as far as board-up services, but I do think it would be very beneficial to the community, and there's already a little bit of precedence and some things that can be looked into as far as what the state of Ohio and Fannie Mae are doing in that regards. And that's it.
Alright, thank you. Jesse Robertson?
Jesse Robertson, 23353 Hoover Avenue. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I come before you tonight to speak on a few of the events that have occurred over the past three weeks. To begin, I believe that most people watching this will be aware that it's been exactly one week since the November 5th general election. While Oakland County Clerk's Office has yet to give finalized details on things like the turnout, we do know that Hazel Park's vote total has improved since the last city council election. In 2017, 1,201 people came out to cast a ballot, and going on the numbers, I can be assured that at least, that number has grown to at least 1,234. So, we have an improvement. On top of this, there is significance historically to these results. First, allow me to congratulate Councilmember Andy LaCuro for not only placing first in vote total, but for making this his 10th consecutive election victory. This appears to be a record for Hazel Park, and this new term would, could bring you to a total of 22 years of uninterrupted service as a member of the Hazel Park City Council. I do not believe anybody has ever managed this before, so congratulations.
Not uninterrupted, you will have the record. Jack has the record for the most terms ever served on the city council, but you are closing in on that record, but you have the record, you will have the record for the most uninterrupted service as a city councilperson, non-mayor, you have that already.
Yeah, I was careful to qualify my statements there, because also specifying city, city council, because technically for time, both Mayor Webb and Councilmember LaCuro are on equal time, but some of that for Webb is as mayor. And secondly, I extend congratulations to our new incoming member, Mike McFaul. This is also of historical significance, as I look back at least over a decade, like I say, I wasn't able to look too far into the election records, that this will be the first time that I've seen somebody actually come from the, from not on council and win their way in on the first election. In all previous cases I was able to find, it was either on their second try, as would be the case with Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan and, and Councilmember Aubrey, or they were previously appointed, like Beth Holland. Also, as I believe that you are one, actually one of our newer residents in the city, too, which this actually is a testament to how quickly one can really throw oneself in to becoming involved and engaged with the community. This is truly meteoricized and worthy of congratulations. You're very welcome. Now, while most of what's at the top of the minds might have been the elections or how darn cold it is, there was actually far more that's happened over the past few weeks. Of particular note that I wanted to address was the trunk-or-treat event from over two weeks ago, it was actually, I believe, on October 26th. While the, the event did get rained out after about an hour from starting, in that span, the consensus was that we were able to give candy and toys to nearly 600 children in attendance. While that number is technically smaller than others, the other years that, you know, didn't get rained out, that was a very intensive pace, because that was all in an hour. And it is a testament to the, how successful this event is. Additionally, I'd like to address something that caught my attention while there. A large portion of the kids were not particularly vocal, often missing out on the standard cue lines that we've come to know, such as trick-or-treat and thank you. In virtually every circumstance, I heard an apology from the adults with their children. For them, I would like to give a public response here. Such an apology was wholly unnecessary. While saying these lines are what we've traditionally expected out of the Halloween and trunk-or-treat and trick-or-treat experience, I feel that I can speak for everyone when I recognize that for these children, many of whom are extremely young, trunk-or-treat can be a daunting experience. Many of these children might not be neurotypical, or simply might not be used to that sort of public situation at all. Wait frankly, it's easy to see that the situation could be stimulation overload for any child. I know none of them meant any form of disrespect, and all were trying their hardest. Each and every one of them was having fun, and that was the most important part. That is the whole purpose of the trunk-or-treat event. Everyone comes together so the children can have something to enjoy, something to look forward to, and later remember happily. And in recognition of that, I would like to also extend my thanks to the City Edge Church for their organization of this, and helping keep this strong annual tradition, along with everyone who volunteered and the rest of the community that all came out to partake. It is thanks to all of you that something like this can keep happening and ensure that this and other great things are happening in the City of Hazel Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on the public discussion?
Michael Allen, 461 West Maple Dale. Thank you for the kudos on trunk-or-treat, I'm here from City Edge Church to say thank you to everybody that showed up to help. Even though weather never does cooperate with us, it's either cold or rainy, I think we've had one year that the weather was halfway decent. But we did have a great turnout, lots of kids showed up, lots of people showed up, and although it's run by the Ruck Department and City Edge Church, if it wasn't the community's help of them coming out and helping hand out candy and making it work, it wouldn't work, so thank you to everybody that showed up to help. Main reason I came tonight is I'm noticing the new road construction on John R., especially. Corner of Woodward Heights and John R., it would be the southeast corner is a new spot where they poured cement. I notice one day when it rained, the crosswalk floods, so that section of the road is lower than the drains on both sides of the, of the, where the crosswalk is, and it wasn't like an inch of water, there was probably like three or four inches of water there.
You said it's the southeast corner?
Southeast corner, yes. Also, I believe I saw pictures on corkboard that the corner of Nine and John R. does the same thing, both corners by...
That's not done yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, as long as it's not done, okay, I can't believe everything you read on corkboard, so... Also, I don't remember if it was last summer or the fall before, the corner of Palmer and Woodward Heights was redone. That corner floods every time it rains, too, at the crosswalk. I think that should be addressed. Just while I'm up here, I'd like to say congratulations to the Hazel Park Police Department, everybody that voted for Officer Castorf and...
Lando?
My noise goes blank. What an awesome opportunity. Just, it was, it was fun to vote every day, it was fun to see the videos posted by Officer Castorf and Lando, and hope to see more videos of Lando, it was, it was fun to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from public discussion? I'll close public discussion. Since we got the Lando topic, I'd like to have the police chief come up and give us a little... a little mention here before we head into our agenda.
Thank you to everyone in the city, residents, business owners, employees, everybody voted, everybody shared it with family and friends. Overwhelmed by the amount of support, hearing some of the stories of people that voted and cared about it, it was, it was a lot of fun. It felt like the, brought the community closer together, closer with other law enforcement friends around the area. And, you know, the voting went outside this state even, so it was, it was awesome. And we won by a lot. We had over 32,000 votes, actually close to 33, and the runner-up, Marysville, was at just over 26,000, so.
Wow.
Would like to mention some names, but I know I'll forget some, so I'm not going to do that, but Linda Yono, Mike, they put in tons of effort doing the postings, the skits, the videos, and that was done on Mike's own time. I know Linda was doing that late at night, early morning, all the time. Sharon Peters gave us ideas on different things to do, so it was a, a community effort, and it was, I'm overwhelmed that we won it, and it's, it's really cool, so testament to this, this community, this city. We probably won't, they had to order it and build it, then we got to put the canine stuff in it, so probably won't have it for about four months, and I think the actual shutdown, GM shutdown, did affect some things, so I don't, it might take longer. But thank you to vested interests, Sandy Markle, she's the main one that does that program, so. It's, the whole thing is awesome, and whoever that anonymous donor is for Marysville, that's great. It's great to see the next, another smaller town in Michigan get that, too.
Chief, you thanked everybody, but I'm going to thank you. You were a big supporter of this process, you worked very hard on this as well yourself, and I want to thank you for your efforts. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Good work.
I don't know if you had any particular questions about.
Appreciate it. Just wanted to get an update and let everybody know how it happened.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Council, it takes us down into our consent agenda. Get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on a revised agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda items one through seven, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
A dissension, discussion. I have 21329 John R., GM Equity Development. Anyone here? The 22241 John R., Children's Dental Specialists of Hazel Park. Anyone here that would like to come up? And we have a, the Shamies is here for 1065 East Nine Mile. They're going to get an approval for a liquor license. And the Shamies has revamped House of Beer, and, and I believe Eddie's done a very nice job.
Where's Eddie? He was here.
Eddie's here if he'd like to come up and give a little comment about his new business.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The new business is, I changed it to the Shamies Party Shop, because the previous owners didn't do it well. Good job to serve the community, so I decided to go with the Shamies. We're so lucky to have a liquor license, because this really adds up to the business. Everybody comes in, wants, one-stop shop nowadays, so we'll keep serving pizza and sandwiches, and we're going to open up until midnight, and hopefully we'll be here for a long time.
All right.
Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilwoman, councilperson's, who's got a question on item four?
So item four is our pending new business license applications. We've got a pretty, there's 14 items on here, some of these, they applied back in March, April, and May. So for example, Doug's Delight, the season is now over, but we still have them as a pending business license, so I'm just wondering if we can have someone look into what's, why it's taking so long to get some of these businesses or licenses when they're, especially if they're seasonal and the season's over.
We'll find out what happened.
I, I could, I could help with that. What happens is a lot of times when individuals come in and apply, they, they get confused about what the process is at the state level as well, and trying to sort through that, it can be complicated. Oftentimes, there's other types of things that they have to take care of on the individual level as well. So normally what they'll do is, when I discover these issues, I'll reach out to them and let them know, and then they'll work along with the state to get things properly registered with the state and everything. A lot of times, there's problems, too, is because the handwriting cannot be read, and then when it goes up into the state, they're entering in the wrong names of businesses and such. So that's been daunting for the Clerk's Office and myself, trying to figure out what does it really say.
And, and sometimes it's as, it's as minor as not calling for that last inspection.
Yes.
So these folks have already applied, there's not really, there's nothing glaring, we're not looking to shut any of them down, but sometimes there is a minor thing, just one, one T isn't crossed, one I isn't dotted, and we haven't brought it before you to issue yet.
So.
I'll see if I can get you an update on all of them.
For some of these issues, maybe this is something we can be a little more proactive about, instead of having a handwritten application, maybe we can bring it into 2019, 2020 and.
Do it online.
Do it online, get an electronic application, maybe that'll help speed up the process, clear up some issues, make it a little bit more user-friendly for some people, and that way they don't have to come in here and, and maybe we can train somebody to, I, I know Oakland County offers a lot of business support services, maybe we can train somebody on our staff to, at this level, to help walk people through to, to also make this more business-friendly.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do to clean this up and see what the, what the delays are.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Consent agenda passes, administrative reports. Amendment title eight, Health and Safety, Chapter Two, Abandon and Vacant Structures, Section 02010, findings to include the findings of deteriorated and deteriorating areas in amendment, Section 8.02, .020, definitions, include definitions of such.
Mr. Mayor, I have before you Mr. Jeff Campbell, Director of Planning and Community Development, Deputy City Attorney. Anything else, jobs we can give him?
Very briefly, to the last point that Councilmember Aubrey made, we will also be revamping the business development, sort of website as well as part of the RRC requirements. So there will be.
Oh, that stuff is on the way.
So yeah, that's part of RRC, which we hope to have done hopefully by the third quarter of 2020.
For anyone listening, RRC is redevelopment-ready community.
Sorry, I don't even know what the acronyms are. Foreign. Thank you. So basically, this ordinance change is mostly required by CDBG, the Community Development Block Grants has gotten a little more, has more requirements for code enforcement to be used, and really, I think for the purposes, it doesn't effectuate anything particular in the ordinance, but we need the definition somewhere. I don't have a problem with what Mr. Sleevast proposed of sort of limiting down the area, I just want to make it, I don't want to make it too, the minimum size too big, because we don't know when we might need this again. So I, I think it's prudent to have it in there. CDB requires this, Housing and Urban Development requires this, so we want to, because we're not able to be self-sufficient and, and not have CDBG provide money to code enforcement, and frankly, we're still catching up from the Great Recession. And I would say that we're improving, but it's, there's still work to be done, thus that's why you have a definition that sort of is a catch-all. And in addition, we, there was some sort of confusion with the vacant registration and defining of what a residential and commercial structure vacant was. We made it uniform, basically if you're vacant, nobody's there within 30 days, that's the trigger to come in and apply.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, Administration recommend pass this on first reading. Jeff will sit down, we'll see if we can't incorporate some of what Jake suggested into.
Eight houses seems like a good minimum.
Right. So.
Jeff Campbell, can I ask, does, does HUD have different requirements for different-sized communities? Like, obviously our community is significantly smaller than surrounding neighborhoods.
It's, if, yes, they do, but it's really small, it's like 5,000.
Okay. We don't meet that.
No. Otherwise, it would be exempt. And just so you know, an area might change, too, depending on, that's why I don't want to define it geographically, because an area might change on what the census tract dictates it might be, based on the low moderate income level of that census tract. Sorry, that's weedy, but.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Takes us to the public hearing. I'd like to open the, open up the public hearing for 2020 Community Development Block Grant CDBG application. Anyone wishing to speak on? Once again, Jeffrey Campbell.
Very briefly, so we have the, the vast, vast, I think it's 96% allocated to CDBG code enforcement, however, pursuant to the Council's request and the request of the Haven representative that came last year, we are making, we are allocating, we are proposing to allocate 3,500 to Haven, the services of Haven, which I know have served members of the community.
Again, I'll open up public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on this particular issue? Seeing no one, close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, Administration requests approval.
I can open for. Move approval of the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Application.
Support.
Dissension, discussion.
I just want to thank you for remembering the contribution to Haven from last year.
Yes, again, we're, we're finally in a financial position where we can allocate that contribution. I know that was a strong recommendation from all the members of the Council previously, and we're happy to do this.
Okay, takes us to show cause hearing, garage at 32 West Hayes Avenue. And we have any comments about this from the Administration?
John's here. John Waddell is here, is also a building inspector. If anybody has any questions, I have John Waddell here. This is substantially derelict, I have some, some photos here, and I have some color photos that are, they tell a pretty.
Good evening, Councilman John Waddell. I'm one of the building inspectors for the city of Hazel Park. I primarily do the businesses in the rental inspections. This property, while I was in code enforcement for a while, has been a problem. The gentleman, I went with Roger Pinch to do the initial inspection, and the structure is in very bad shape. The gentleman told us that he's a structural engineer, which I was on the fence with that based on his explanation to me and to Roger. I went back several times, I tried to reach out to him with letters and stuff, he has not done nothing with this property, and the garage is in really bad shape, we've had several complaints from neighbors next door, and I've told her several times I'm trying to work on it, and something really needs to be done with this structure.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone here representing this property?
Are you representing the property or just public?
Anyone here for the, representing the property?
Anyone from the public?
I didn't think we had.
Yeah, can you do public hearing?
Didn't say public. There's show calls here.
No, you still have to do a public.
Nice to be able to talk on this one. Beth Holland, 305 West Milton Avenue, and Anya.
Yeah, Anya Reed, 41 West Milton Avenue, I live north of that particular property.
Her property butts up to it. Not only the garage needs to come down, but the house really needs some attention. It's been wide open for about the last eight months. The garage is a hot mess, it's ready to fall over, but the house, there's no excuse for this. Nobody has been working on it, it's wide open, and if I remember correctly, this one should be a non-conforming at this point in rezoned parking, because it's been vacant for over a year.
Yeah, so the garage, basically the roof is already caving in, and then in the back you can see even the whole structure of that house is in disarray, and in addition to that, there are many dead trees on that property, and the neighbor next door had already issues. A tree was falling down and actually knocking his power out, so there are many things which actually should be done in that house, should be taken down in my opinion.
Despite DT's efforts, it's not just the trees that are falling down, there's debris, fence structures down, privacy fence down, children do go in there and play, and I believe the house has finally been boarded up in the back, but there are windows open to the back and there is public access, so it's a safety issue. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klobuchar, can we see where the rest of the progress on the property goes?
Uh, yep, we will have code enforcement address the house. That obviously needs to be addressed as well. Tonight before you, the matter is the garage, and the Administration strongly recommends that demolition be ordered.
I'll close, open up public hearing for the official. Anyone else wishing to speak on a property?
I'm Lynn Cupp, I work in the Building Department, and I work a little with Melissa during the hearings. I just want to point out that the owner of the property did sign an order, he agreed to, that he would be taking down this garage. This was done in April, and he also pulled the permits, but has not since done anything with it, so.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
So again, the Administration recommends demolition.
Anyone else with a public hearing, have a comment on this particular piece of property? Now we can entertain a motion.
I'll move the recommend motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I would just like to add that notice was properly given. Thank you.
Do I have a support?
Support.
A dissension, discussion. One garage down. Okay, it takes us to Boards and Commissions, seeing none. Tabled items, seeing none. New business, any council members have any new business? You have got one new business item that former councilperson, Allen, please come up. We do this for all the council people in the last few.
It's been a pleasure. Thank you. It's been a privilege to serve the community.
Okay, it would take us to communications from department heads. Anyone, department heads have any comments they want to bring up? Anything about snow days?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, Mr. Jones is on vacation, so Steve Chanchas, our DPW foreman, has been in charge along with Tim Young, our Water Superintendent, to try to make sure that we get the snow plowed. This was a very difficult snow. It was thick and it was heavy, and then it got very cold and very early in the year, so it's been a big mess. We'll be cleaning up streets throughout the week on Street Maintenance Day and in other areas as possible. So please, you know, while the snow emergency has officially been lifted, please do try to keep your cars off the street as much as possible, so that the city trucks can come by and we can remove some of the snow that was plowed around cars, which are causing problems for people accessing their driveways. So again, we're asking, even though it's not a snow emergency, please do the best that you can to keep the roads clear. I want everyone to know, we did not have good compliance with this snow emergency. The first one, maybe people forget that when we call a snow emergency, you have to get your cars off the street. Next time, if I have to, we'll call in police on overtime to issue tickets, because we're going to have to improve our compliance, because when you don't move your car, sometimes that plow goes around, it plows in your neighbor's driveway, and that's a big problem. So we need everybody to comply. Want to thank DPW and Water also helped out. It was all hands on deck to try to get the city done. We got the city done today before four o'clock. Great job by everyone, but we're still going to be cleaning up the streets.
Anyone, any other department heads want to come up? Chief?
Yeah, with the, with the colder weather getting here much earlier than normal, you know, people are going to warm up their cars. We do have an ordinance against that. Do we enforce? We do have an ordinance against that, do we enforce it? No, I haven't seen a ticket for that in a long time. But, you know, today's technology is a lot better. If you warm up your car and you can lock it, great, if you can't, I caution against it. I think the reason for the ordinance way back when was to stop, you know, stolen cars and that kind of thing. Obviously, that's not a, not the same amount of a problem it used to be, but if you have a device that can lock your car, use it, get a club if you can't lock the doors, that kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Department Heads? Tim?
Just a reminder to everybody, we are getting to the cold time of the year, and a lot of homes have crawl spaces. These are notorious for freezing pipes, so please take a look around your houses. If your crawl space has ventilation, you might wanna secure it with some insulation in the inside, take a look inside, make sure no pipes are crossing that vent, because that cold air will freeze your pipe, and then you'll be calling the city thinking we turned your water off, when that wouldn't be the case. Also, when the pipes do freeze, eventually they will split, and as things thaw, we're gonna have a lot of water running underneath your home. So, once again, it's very important to check out your home and try to properly winterize it. Check your spigots, disconnect your garden hoses, that kind of thing, you know, help you in the long run.
Thank you. Takes us to the City Attorney. Do you have any comments?
I just wanted to say thank you again for all the support.
Thank you. City Manager?
I see Lacy over there, Lacy, did you have anything that you wanted to comment about? Okay. Lacy's kinda the unsung hero, she's been very critical in terms of helping me stabilize the city's finances, did the road bond, all the rest of that. So again, wanna recognize her for all that she does as well. Yeah, you can clap for Lacy. Again, congratulations to the Hazel Park Police Department for winning the Tahoe. Mike Kazdorff and Lando, and Linda from my office, and Chief Buchholz, and Jared, and everybody helped out a great deal to try to make this happen. It was a great win for this community. So many people voted, I tried to vote every single day, I know many others did. It truly was a team effort, Hazel Park is an amazing city. In the face of adversity, and of course, a fundamentally broken system of municipal finance, Hazel Park is always able to find a way to not just survive, but to thrive. I wanna congratulate Andy LaCuro on his win. He is the longest-serving purely councilperson in the city of Hazel Park's history, and I look forward to working with him once again to make Hazel Park a great place. Congratulations to Mike McFaul, again, look forward to working with you. You'll find that my Department Heads are amazing, my employees are tremendous, and everybody does a great job to make Hazel Park a great place. Finally, congratulations to our new Mayor Pro Tem, Alyssa Sullivan. That's, I think you were, I didn't expect that. Good luck to you in that position, and we'll help you in any way to fulfill those duties. I look forward to working with all of you to make Hazel Park the best place we can be. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take this to our, let Councilman LaCuro have the first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna just say thank you to all the voters came out, to all the supporters. It was an interesting race. Haven't experienced social media in quite such a manner before, and hope to never again. Congratulations to Landau and his officer, who's, what's his, oh, Kazdorff, right?
Michael Kazdorff.
Congratulations to all the candidates really who ran in this race. In the immortal words of Tom Selman, if you love somebody, tell them, if you have children, hug them and tell them you love them every day, Kara. I love you. Thanks for coming out, and we don't need an executive session or anything like that.
I need a teeny, tiny, very brief. Five-minute.
Councilman McFaul.
Because I haven't eaten dinner, so it's gotta be brief.
I would like to thank the voters of Hazel Park. I know I haven't lived in the city for very long, so I'm very humbled that you chose to vote for me. And again, I'd like to, I'd also like to echo Andy's comments to all the people that ran, because it's not an easy thing to do, so thank you. And congratulations to the Hazel Park Police Department, that'll be a really nice addition. I think that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Aubrey?
So again, kudos to the Police Department, to everybody that worked on the plethora of social media posts, reminding everybody every day, multiple times a day, to vote, 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 vote. It was great going to local pet stores, and they have the flyers up reminding people to vote. Seeing it shared everywhere on social media. It was really great to see our local, other communities supporting us, they understand the importance of supporting us in this contest. It also benefits them, and allow us to be able to serve our neighbors better as well, as a, as a region. I want to congratulate our re-elected Councilperson LaCuro and newly-elected Councilperson McFaul, and thank Councilperson Holland for her service. And I wanna put out a kudos to everybody that volunteered on Election Day at the polls, it was very cold. I drove around with hot packs, hot cocoa, hot tea, after the sun went down to make sure everybody stayed as warm as they could. So it's, our volunteers are great, especially when they come out in the cold like that. And I just wanna remind everybody with this record-setting snowfall that we had, because it was record-setting for the month. If you, especially with this wet, heavy snow, if you see your neighbors outside, if you are an able-bodied individual, please help your neighbors, especially your elderly or disabled neighbors, help them get those sidewalks cleared. Hats up to the mailboxes for the mailman and everybody.
May I approach Tim Sullivan?
It's gonna take a minute to get used to that. I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight, again, it's lovely to see so many people participating in the democratic process. I wanna congratulate our newly-elected and re-elected councilmembers, as well as the other councilmembers that ran, and anybody that's run. Also, a huge thanks to volunteers in this community, and the volunteers that, that participate in not only election time, the people that work at the polls, but also our volunteers in this community year-round, our city really runs on volunteers. So it's great to see people continuing to give to this community. Reminder that the tree lighting is the twenty-sixth of this month, so don't miss that, it's a good time for everybody. There's, usually the band comes and plays, which is wonderful as well, that's one of my favorite parts. I wanna wish everybody an early Happy Thanksgiving. You know, hug your family, reach out to loved ones, if you know a neighbor that maybe doesn't have family, reach out to them and see if they would like to join your celebration. We do Friendsgiving in my circle of friends, where we all get together and kind of, you know, do a little, everybody brings a dish, it's a good time. What else? I had another thing, a happy belated birthday to Ed, it was the day of election, so. That was a nice, you're welcome, nice stressful day. And I think that, oh, obviously, the HPPD, I'm so proud of this community, I'm so proud of the surrounding communities, the effort put in by our Police Department and the Administration here to really amp up those voting opportunities. It was great to see so much creativity, and I'm really excited about the new Police Department page. I think that's a great tool for the community to get information out to also. And that's, I want everybody to have a safe, safe drive home, echo Amy's thoughts, if you see a neighbor struggling to get their snow shoveled, reach out, help them out, you know, five, ten minutes does a lot of good, and build your neighbors, so, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Well, thanks for coming out in this ice age in November two thousand nineteen.
It's the truth, well said, Mayor.
It's been kinda crazy this year, hopefully we don't have the record numbers going forward. I wanna say thank you and congratulations to Mike McFaul and Andy LaCuro on your reelection and election. And congratulations to former Councilperson Holland on her term in office as well. Now that we got all the customary stuff out of the way, we gotta move forward, okay? We got a lot of things going on, and everybody's up in arms about how far Nine Mile's gonna be, why there's holes in the middle of Nine Mile, why it's not complete, be patient, the weather's being a little troublesome for everybody right now.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, I'm glad that you brought that up. Tom Jones, before he went on vacation, he did express our displeasure to the Nine Mile contractor. They are running behind schedule, and I am displeased. So, and, and we've expressed that to them, some of it is not their fault, because we have had extraordinarily bad weather. We still think they could be doing better, absolutely.
Because there was a couple of three weeks they didn't do anything, but I wasn't gonna bring it up.
No, we.
They've been very laxadaisical on this whole project, and it's been embarrassing to have hired them.
Rest assured.
Really wanna get down to it.
We did bring that up to them.
But since you started up, I was trying to be nice about it, but that's, but that's been pretty hard to get past that, and a lot of residents have been showing their displeasure and, and saying that it's been really rough by having the inconvenience of that whole thing.
Luckily, the South John R. went well, North John R. pretty much on schedule, a couple little minor things that need to be tweaked here and there, but they're on time, they did well.
Since, when Tom gets back, if he's not already back, would you give us as councilpeople an update from the contractor in writing to us, telling us they're going to complete this by such and such a date, and make them sign it, or we're gonna deduct money from the contract?
Well, we'll do what we can under the law, not gonna.
Twist their arm to finish it quick.
We are twisting, that's what was the purpose of the meeting, I don't wanna.
I know you can't say anything, but it's getting a little ridiculous.
I don't always divulge my strategy, so.
It's a little ridiculous.
It is bad.
But anyways, thank you for coming out. Don't forget, love your relatives, whether you like them or not, on Thanksgiving. It is the holidays, we have those challenges, okay? But also be considerate of others when you can, and try to not say anything when you can't, be considerate. But try to be nice to everyone you can. And I wanna say thank you for this interesting meeting, and congratulations to everybody that came out and supported the council, and for either, whether you're pro or against any one of us, thank you for coming out and supporting us.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I request to go into executive session for Unique Lennon versus Hazel Park.
Make a motion to go to a brief, very brief.
Very brief.
Exact session.
Do I have a support?
Discuss a legal matter, support.
Any dissentia, discussion, anything else? Okay, thank you again.